All this regular council meeting of November fourteenth of order. Let everybody please rise for a moment of silence. For all of those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call please Mr. Don, Mr. Gerard, Mr. Gerard that was here earlier but he had to leave. Mr. Ricchio.
Here.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Pezz.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Catroci.
Here.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
Here.
Just to jump on to what Jim said, Mr. Gerard was here at the executive session and had a reason to leave, I mean, I don't want to, but, you know, he had a good reason that he had to go take care of something. Okay, our first proclamation is honoring somebody that was the face behind the Grundy Foundation for many, many years and has been like an icon in this town. And when you think of the Grundy Foundation, you always think of one person, and that's Len Snyder. And from when I got elected almost sixteen years ago, the Grundy Foundation with Len and Roland Johnson and now Jean Williams has always been part of Bristol Borough. No matter what this town needed, the Grundy Foundation has always stepped up to help out the residents of Bristol Borough, the taxpayers of Bristol Borough, and Bristol Borough Council. And I don't think we could do more than to bring somebody like Len Snyder in tonight to honor him. Again, I have a lot of respect for Len, and it's an honor for me to work with him for my career, my fifteen years here as a councilman. So Len, I want to welcome you up and whoever's with you to come up with Mr. Pezz and Mr. Cullen for a proclamation.
Thank you.
Okay, so it is Lorraine and my pleasure to welcome Mr. Snyder and his lovely wife up here to read a proclamation of the Borough Council of Bristol County, Bristol Borough, excuse me, County of Bucks and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing and thanking Leonard N. Snyder for his extraordinary contributions to historic Bristol Borough. Whereas the limits and well-being of historic Bristol Borough are not in its land or its location, but how those who have lived here and worked here live their lives. And whereas Leonard N. Snyder served as the Executive Director of the Grundy Foundation from nineteen sixty-eight through nineteen ninety, and whereas Leonard N. Snyder during these six decades of service to the foundation provided vision and guidance that among other accomplishments refurbished the Margaret R. Grundy Memorial Library, founded the Bristol Riverside Theater, built the Grundy Arena, and provided funding for renovations to Borough Hall and police and fire departments. Now therefore be it resolved and proclaimed by the Borough Council and Mayor of historic Bristol Borough that Leonard N. Snyder be publicly thanked for his extraordinary and selfless efforts to make historic Bristol Borough a truly wonderful community. Thank you very much.
Did it work? Thank you very much, not quite sure what to say other than thank you. I would like to say, doing this, I would like to say two things. First of all, we have to thank the people that in this building and Mr. Grundy who made it all possible because without him, none of that would ever happen. So remember, he gave us the fourteen million dollars to get it started. And we went on and on and on for years. And I want to thank all the people that participated with us in these various projects. They are the ones that made it work. Alls we did was provide the money, the people, all the projects, everything. Other people made it work. So I accept this one behalf of all those people. I'm really very humbled by this and thank you very much.
Now we have our new Executive Director. He's got some big shoes to fill there, buddy. Jean, I'd like you to come up with Mary, who's coming up, give us a presentation on the summer program.
That is a tough act to follow, believe me. Mr. Council President, De Giuseppe, members of council, Mr. Mayor, Borough administrative staff, friends and residents of Bristol Borough. On behalf of the AOC, we're here to report on our successful twenty sixteen summer camp programs. We greatly appreciate council support of the field trips for this year's Snyder Girardi Elementary School Learning Center Summer Camp. Keep in mind that there are two, there were two grants effective this past summer. One was for the High School Learning Center, the other was for the Snyder Girardi Elementary School Learning Center. One was a Cohort Six A and one was a Cohort Eight A, both of which came from Twenty-First Century. They just had different time periods. The one for the high school was ending and the one for the elementary school was just beginning, so we were in a transition period there. However, AOC provided assistance to both learning centers. Just as a note, AOC is required by the grant, by the Twenty-First Century Grant, to raise funds for expenditures not permitted by either cohort, such things as field trips, food transportation, special projects and programs. That's what the AOC does. It's fundraisers for these expenditures not permitted by the grant. And overall, I'll give you an overall overview of the program, then I'll let some of the folks involve the day-to-day activities, tell you a little bit more about the specifics. At the Learning Center, for the Snyder Girardi Learning Center, we had a hundred and sixty-two children enrolled. For the Camp Outrageous, we had fifty-five students enrolled. And for our Learning Center up at the high school, we had seventy-nine. That's a total of almost three hundred children that we serviced this year. An average attendance is about two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five. So think about that from grades one through twelve. Bristol Borough at any point in time had as many as, say, about two hundred and twenty-five children involved in summer camp activities this summer. That's a phenomenal, phenomenal number. And it wasn't just babysitting, it was really, really good, fun activities, learning, everything was learning-based, and I think a little bit more about that. Very appreciative of council's ten thousand dollar investment last year. Our other partners include the school district, Ivan's House, which is the administrative arm of the Cohort Eight Grant with the district, United Way, King George's Second Inn, Bristol Riverside Theater, Grundy Library, and the Arts Diocese of Philadelphia. During the week tonight, talk a little bit more about the specifics, our Darlaudah Barry Johnson. Ms. Johnson is the Ivan's House Executive Director, she's also the administrator of the Twenty-First Century Cohort Eight Grant. That's the one that's in play now. That will extend through twenty eighteen. It brings approximately one point two million dollars into the borough for school, school programs for public, parochial, and private schools. I'm happy to announce that this year beginning in twenty sixteen, we have three learning centers, one of which is at the Snyder Girardi Elementary School, one up at the high school, and for the first time, we have a center at St. Mark. So all our children, whether it be public, parochial, or private, have access to these programs, which I think is a phenomenal feat. Also joining us tonight is Ms. Latoya Woodsham. She's a reading specialist at Snyder Girardi and also the camp coordinator. Lastly, Mrs. Justwali, who's our Title One Coordinator with the district. These folks will be talking a little bit more about the programs in particular. The AOC is about providing opportunities for children. There's now a graduation requirement. I don't know if the council is aware of that, that the school district now has a forty-hour service requirement. What AOC attempts to do is to take the forty hours that the children are required to amass over a four-year period and actually make it meaningful, connect the dots, so to speak. Give the children career civic-minded experiences, provide opportunities. We had such one opportunity this morning where we invited our service learning folks, children, students who've done community service. Senator Tom Tomlinson addressed the students at Bristol High School. Phenomenal. And it's amazing what our kids can do. They were well dressed, they were well prepared, I give a lot of credit to the district for doing that. And what AOC did is we provided breakfast for the students and Senator Tomlinson. I also want to point out the fact that Mr. Mayor, Joe Saxon, was there, also Police Chief Steve Henry was there as well. Great people to see and have our kids just ask questions become familiar with. That's what the AOC is attempting to do, to draw the children and the students together with the community. And in addition to those opportunities, we've also spent over thirty-five thousand dollars in the ten, in the six-year period beginning in twenty-ten. So with the opportunities and the funding, I think the AOC is poised to provide a lot more of these opportunities for our children. With that, I'll give the mic over to Mr. Darlaudah Barry Johnson to talk about the Twenty-First Century Program Cohort Eight effective twenty sixteen.
Hi, thank you for inviting us to come and speak. I am Darlaudah Barry Johnson, Executive Director at the Ivan's Outreach Center. Our facility is housed in Morrisville, where outreach for the Presbyterian Church. And we've been working with the schools, various school districts in reference to writing grants. We've been working with them since about two thousand and two. I was very excited when we were approached by the AOC to come in and assist with the new funding through Pennsylvania Department of Ed for Bristol Borough School District to be their own financial agent. In the past, they had, the physical agent was United Way. The goal was to give the ownership to the district, to the community, to the parents, to the students. By doing that, we were working tirelessly with the borough, with the community in reference to what do they want to see in their district, what do they want to see in their school, and what type of parenting programs would they like to see happen at that site. We applied for the Cohort Eight funding in summer of two thousand and fifteen due to the budget impasse in the state of Pennsylvania. We weren't notified until January and we did not get our programming up and going until about April timeframe. The goal of the grant, as you can see, we did put a PowerPoint together and we gave out a handout, is to address the core curriculum. It does target the school districts who are less than performing, and the goal is to give them academic support after school, before school, evening, summer. The goal is to tie the teachers in, realistically, the teachers to come in and bring their classrooms alive through after-school programming. We met with the teachers throughout the district who handed in a lot of proposals to do with our kids after school and in the summer, once again tying it back into the school day academically or bringing enrichment or fund programs into the after-school, which is allowable by the grant. We have partnerships also. The goal is giving the funds back to the community, partnering with local businesses, partnering with the Bristol Borough Riverside Theater, once again putting that money back into the community to bring in art, music, recreation, character education, all of which the district is at the table to say, yes, we want them, no, we don't want them, and can you co-find what we would like to have. Family participating in the after-school program in summer is huge. We want to make sure that we're educating the parents, that we're giving them the tools to succeed by also working very closely with Mary Deswalde, with literacy programs, computer training, things that the teachers want to do. We're even talking about a community center right now at the high school because it's allowable underneath the grant, possibly transforming the library. So we're in works with that, being able to open it up to the community for them to come in and get classes or address issues that they would like to have at the high school. And the goal is also to make sure we're including them in the process that they have a voice in the grant and that they do realize that this is their grant, and our goal is to make sure we're doing what they would like to see happen. To mobilize school, community, and private sector, social, health services, support and resources in order to remove barriers that impede students from learning. So in the after-school program, for example, we are in partnership with the Philadelphia Arts Diocese for snacks. In the summer, the Arts Diocese came in and provided the breakfast and lunch. We want to make sure that they're fed. We've also connected already with the YMCA with the Driving Out the Coal. We have over three hundred jackets that we already have in our possession to distribute. We're already working on how can we distribute toys, holiday help, Thanksgiving baskets. That is the role of the Ivans as a resource and referral center by the Guidance Department identifying, the school identifying families in need. You might have families in need that you can refer us to so we can make sure we're supporting their efforts and connecting them to the resources in Bucks County as a whole. What we found is that a lot of parents don't know where to go when they have that need. So we're working with the Guidance Council, we'll always work with police departments, we'll always work to make sure we're connecting the dots. Next one. So here we have a list of what we must do in terms of achieving our measurable objectives. And in the grant, we did say that we would service three hundred and thirty-three students per year. The grant is for K through twelfth grade. So for example, at the high school level, we are bringing in the SAT, the college and career readiness, things like that, that would address the kids being ready for the next level, college tours that we can do, credit recovery for academic support, literacy after-school clubs with Ms. Heather or Doug Braun and Maria, who are going to work with us with SAT as well as gardening. So the teachers are definitely coming together in the high school level as well in the elementary level. And I would also like to note that Latoya is our after-school coordinator. We're gracious enough to have her come onboard with everything that she's already doing. But a big part of the grant is identifying the students who need it. So Latoya and Mary G., the principals who are looking at their data, who are looking at the students who are on the bubble, if you will, who are right on that verge of passing, that is our hope to get those students proficient so when they're taking those PSSA scores in two thousand and seventeen, Bristol Borough scores begin to climb, begin to climb. That's what the state wants to see, that we're making a difference in the school and the students' academic success. We have to, you know, attend the national and state trainings. We are responsible as the Ivan's House of all of the reporting that has to go in. And what I didn't provide and what we will email over to you is the first-year evaluation report. Tom Schaefer, Superintendent, was very happy. I know he did disseminate it to the school board, but we'll make sure that it gets to the borough so that you can see the things that we do have to address, and you might have insight. Please share if you want us to do something, things that we could do on a community level. We need you to let us know that. Maintaining accurate annual report, performance report data, that can tie into grants that you as a borough might be looking to do, whether it's through the police department or things that you might want to do in terms of data, in terms of ethnic, in terms of free and reduced number, needing of assistance. That data, we now have at our fingertips for you to be able to utilize if you're going after grants. And those are definitely things through the Ivans, we've helped other boroughs that looked at grant opportunities. Definitely, we have the state that will come out and do a full evaluation yearly. We will also be audited every year financially by the Pennsylvania Department of Ed. So with that, I will now turn it over to Latoya, who will talk about the summer.
Let me just real quick, talking about the, in particular, the Camp Outrageous program. That camp is run by the Bristol Riverside Theater. It was also at Snyder Girardi Elementary School. It ran July eleventh through August fourth, and I believe there were fifty-five students involved in that program. And the goal of the Camp Outrageous is to build self-esteem through arts and increase students' self-esteem and self-sufficiency through the performing arts, dance, movement, acting, poetry, spoken word, that type of, that type of thing. We had three groups, those seven, ages seven to nine, those ages ten to twelve, and those ages thirteen to seventeen. Apparently, the folk, the roster of folks who do attend Camp Outrageous are kind of repeating, they're kind of in that element, if you will, in the theater arts, but again, it's open to anyone, the artist camp outrageous. And again, I do want to appreciate and give kudos to the district for making sure that all this stuff worked this past summer over at Snyder Girardi. Started at Snyder Girardi with by far our busiest, our busiest site. But through the efforts of Mrs. Justwali and the district, we made it work. The other thing then I'd like to talk about would be the high school program, and Darlaudah had alluded to it, but just real quickly, it ran June twenty-seventh through September twenty-seventh. Such things as credit recovery. Credit recovery basically is an opportunity for those who have not done well to do well. And we'll leave it at that. It's very, it's a necessary evil, so to speak. But it does provide those students who need that help to get over that, get over the hump, so to speak. The next would be the Green Academy, we've heard a lot about that. That would be a school garden, which is a phenomenal program. The district is actually tying in the curriculum with hands-on experiences. If you ever get the chance, the courtyard in the middle of the, in the high school has been transformed into a, into a school garden. Phenomenal. It's a phenomenal success. That's one of the things, again, give these, our kids the opportunities, you know, they run with it. It's really amazing to see. We also have something called workforce development, which is basically giving kids the skills such as resume writing, interview skills, job application skills. We also wanted a field trip to Delaware Valley University this past summer. As Darlaudah mentioned, SAT prep, a real boon for those families who can't afford things like syllabus. It's a lot of money to send kids to a, to an SAT prep class. Here it's all for gratis, provided you're a member of the borough community. It's a phenomenal, phenomenal program. The last thing would be video game design. Those folks who are interested in electronics and how those video games work, we actually had two sessions of kids registered to work with the, learning the fundamentals of video game design. So a lot was happening both on the elementary side as far as Camp Outrageous, and the high school as far as the Learning Center. And I'll turn over to Ms. Latoya to talk about specifically the Snyder Girardi Elementary Learning Center.
So we were so blessed to actually get the grant, and it allowed us to do a lot more than what we were able to do last year. We did keep the schedule the same where the kids were rotating, older kids did recreation first and the younger kids did academics, and then we flipped it. They engaged in reading, writing, math, art, computer lab, science, as well as soccer, basketball, volleyball, wiffleball, flag football, and hockey. Just to give you an idea of our staff, we had a lot of teachers that participated this year. So we had our very own Mrs. DeLuca, Mrs. Bayer, Mr. Perolo, and also Mr. Petrino. Assistants were Stacy Tanum, Mercedes Rodriguez, Heather Fairweather, who's a parent, and Krista Arndt. Our recreational counselors were Peter DeLuca, Taylor Cullen, David D'Angelo, Samantha Tanum, Mackenzie Faith, and Mr. Joe Malone. One of our highlights this year, and it's the first time that I've ever seen it done at a camp, was we were actually able to have the police department come and visit, which was like the highlight for the kids. Chief Henry, along with his department and their family members, came to spend a day with the kids. So the day was filled with the kids getting treats from the hop, as well as the police officer engaging into like games of catch with the kids. And if you could have just seen their smiles, their faces, I mean, it just, it was so nice. It was such a nice day.
Okay. So you can see that the theme going through this whole presentation is partnerships and collaborations. So another wonderful longstanding collaboration we have is with the Grundy Library. And the Grundy Librarians came to our camp once at the beginning, once in the middle, and one time at the end. And they engaged the children in storytelling, reading aloud to the children, which helps to develop their vocabulary skills. We broke the record this summer. Our students read a total of forty-three thousand seventy minutes. That's unheard of. And you know, we were trying to prevent that summer slide, and this is the type of thing that helps prevent that. We also had the Franklin Institute actually come to the school and do a session with our students on astronomy.
I would like to thank you all as Borough Council for providing money for the kids to go on trips. The grant doesn't allow the kids to go on trips and also doesn't allow for food. So from you guys as a borough, as well as the AOC, for transportation, the kids were able to go to Trenton Thunder, as well as Miss Shaminie State Park. And I don't know if you've seen them, I send them to Jen, I send her all the pictures, like the kids. It was really, it was a really great day. The tickets were free, the kids got a free lunch, they watched a game, a couple of them got balls, so they were really excited for that. And then the highlight, or one of our very last days, was in the Shaminie State Park. And we actually took the kids on a picnic, and we had several parents, one being my father, they actually grilled for the students. So they had food off the grill, hot dogs, hamburgers, everything. It was just such a nice thing. And it wouldn't have been provided had you guys not given us the funding that you did. So it really was a beautiful day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's some pictures provided too. You'll see from Trenton Thunder, a couple of the kids, the Grundy Library, the Shonimers, so yeah.
Okay, so we wanted to provide you with some hard academic data as well as some recreation data. So you notice that the first score up there is the school performance profile. That's a relatively new number that has been coming from the Department of Education. Our score this year was sixty-nine point seven percent. We were hoping for seventy percent, missed it by three tenths of a point. But we certainly think that the after-school program and the summer camp have contributed to that number being as high as it is. You can see that the students all were given a pre and a post test, both in reading and math. So definitely, this was more than babysitting. And in the area of reading in grades one through four, sixty-seven percent of our students either made progress or stayed the same. In the area of math, in grades one through four, sixty-six percent of our students progressed or stayed the same. For our grade five to seven students, sixty-one percent of them progressed or stayed the same in reading. And in math, in grades five through seven, fifty-eight percent of our students progressed or stayed the same. So we were pleased, naturally. We would like those numbers to go up and we will try to raise those numbers for next year.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, because I had heard, I don't know if these two correlate, but I had heard Jean say that, or if not Jean, someone said, that, that the principals help identify kids who need extra support. So are those kids reflective in these numbers as well?
So these, these are all of our students who attended the summer program. Now, this sixty-nine point seven is our entire building. That's our state performance.
So would you say that there's a good chunk of kids who were identified who came this summer who were seeking extra academic help?
Absolutely. And so they receive tutoring if they were very needy, and also in our after-school program right now, those children are receiving tutoring.
And I have to thank you because as far as the pre and post test, that was something that came from this meeting about a year ago when we all talked. You guys challenged us enough to think about like, well, how do you know that your numbers are growing? Which is great because like, looking at some of the numbers, I know where I wanted to make it grow for next year. So I appreciate for that. What we did, I'm not a good person when it comes to like recreation, so I found something, some exercises that I thought would be appropriate for all the age groups. So jumping jacks would be one, power jumps, mountain climbing, knee taps, and we did their personal best per minute. So in grades one through five for jumping jacks, we had seventy-two percent of the students progress or stayed the same. Seventy-one percent for power jumps, sixty-eight percent for mountain climbing, and seventy-four for knee taps. And I really attribute that to my recreational counselors because they actually pushed them to do that. You know, the kids were, oh, I could do a better than you can. So it was like, it was really nice, it was great to see that. For grades five through seven, sixty-six percent for jumping jacks progressed or stayed the same, seventy-three percent for power jumps, eighty-four for mountain climbing, which is really hard if you guys have never done that. And then seventy percent for knee tapping. So again, I really do appreciate that tidbit from last year, so it actually made us a little bit better this year, stronger.
So as I noted earlier, the partnership that we do have with the Philadelphia Archdiocese in reference to the snacks, with Tom Schaefer, we are looking at a different program going forward through the Pennsylvania Department of Ed, that we think that we can get funded and happen starting in the summer, where the students will get hot breakfast and hot lunch, all under the guidance of the USDA, I mean, it would all be that, but we are looking at doing hot meals for the kids as we go into the summer. And then the next, is this the?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You can just, I'm sorry.
So what we have also attached, and it's not really a good copy, so I do apologize, are all the programs, what the schedules look like at each site. So we have Snyder, we have St. Mark's, we have the high school, as things are building. We want parents to know what's going on on a daily basis, what it looks like, especially if they have to pick their children up. We want to make sure that the tutoring piece, which is the priority, once again, is always happening on a continuous basis. I do want to note that the Cohort Nine application from Pennsylvania Department of Ed, we expect to come out in January of 2017. Tom Schaefer is on board to apply for additional money, because we are only currently servicing 333 students. There's more in this district that we could service, our goal is to go after additional funding. Now will be the time, if there's, if you think there's something we should incorporate to the grant that you would like to see happen, we're always open to that discussion, even if it's a government program, that you would like to expose the kids, to seeing what it looks like, the behind the scenes of running a borough, once again, going under that, thinking for career mentoring, or the police department, or peer mentoring programs, truancy programs, if they're coming down to see the judge. Now is the time, any input that you might have, we can start working on it over the Christmas holiday, to make it work as we go forward.
Last but not least, I'll wrap this up real quickly. I do want to say, too, that those schedules, we'll work with our letter to make sure that they are posted on the website for the AOC, which is bblearningcenters.com. So once we get everything together, families, parents can go to www.bblearningcenters.com for full information as far as what's happening, when it's happening, at the various learning centers in the borough. The reason we're here, AOC, as I said before, fundraising. We do two events each year. One is a jazz concert, which is in June, hosted by the King George, and the other is our Fall Classic. This year will be next, this coming Saturday, the 19th of November, honoring Mike Fitzpatrick. Mike's long-term, a long-term supporter of the, of the district and of the borough, through his position as a congressman, and knowing that Mike has been very, very helpful in bringing grants to the borough, some of which include the Mill Street Docs, 1.5 million dollars, the technology grant for the police, police borough, police, police department for the, for the borough, it's hard to get out there. Mike was also involved with the 21st Century Community Learning Centering Grants through, through his federal offices. Anytime Mike was asked to do something, Mike stepped up. And what we'd like to do with the AOC is to thank Congressman Fitzpatrick for working, you know, on both sides of the aisle, to get things done for Bristol Borough. So we're hopeful that the borough residents will come out and support our effort to thank Congressman Fitzpatrick for his help. Tickets are $50 per ticket. It also includes a chance for a $1,000 winner for raffle. So King George is catering the event, will be held at the Borough Public Works Building. Again, once again, we thank the Borough Frits offer of that, that building, for our location of this year's Bristol Fall Classic, 7 to 9, Saturday, the 19th, over at the Public Works Building. Lorraine?
I just wanted to say, maybe you could add some music to your program at some point.
Um, like you said, that, that's what we're actually looking forward to for next year. We wanted to see if you can bring in like vocal, as well as dance, just some arts part, because I was a child into this sport, so that's what we're looking for next year.
And I know that there are some helpers that have, you know, they can play instruments, so that they'll be able to help you as well. So that would be great.
Yeah, that's, you finally said that.
I think our kids really, really need music, and I think it makes them do better in school when they, when they have something like that, you know. Thank you. If I can add, we know that there's currently a partnership with the Youth Orchestra of Bucks County, that's coming in to work at the high school level with Jason Molden. In addition to the fact that with the Tom Schaefer Superintendent, we're looking at music grants. That's awesome. Specifically to come in, and also opportunities that we can get the instruments to come in, as well as trying to put together a community band, that are soon to come out to love music and would love to share it. So that's exactly what we're here.
Thank you very much.
The other questions about the program, again, before I wind up, again, please, avail yourselves of some tickets. Tickets are on sale here downstairs with Ann Alarice. Carol Ferguson has them at her jewelry shop, and Ann Wap has them over at Great Ideas. $50.
I just, first of all, I want to thank Latoya and Mrs. Johnson and Mary for all their hard work, and listening through these, all these conversations tonight. I think there is more money out there with these brands that Mr. Johnson talked about, so, I mean, I do pretty good in raising money for the borough. So I would like to meet with the four of you, and maybe the President of the School Board, and sit down and see if there's our avenues out there to go get some more money, because, you know, we focus so much on sports in town, and like Latoya said, there's a lot of kids that don't play sports. So I mean, you know, this is giving them something for the future, you know, to get through life. Because most of the kids, you know, how many kids are going to make the big leagues? So, I mean, I, you know, personally would like to get involved with this, to try to help you raise money. Personally, also, I mean, if it isn't through grants, through businesses that I know, or somebody, maybe we could raise some more money for next summer and do maybe a Sesame Place strip, or something like that, where all the kids get an opportunity to go for nothing. So if you want after, right after Christmas, let's sit down, you know, the four of us, you four, myself, and I'll see a couple, the mayor I know will be involved, and the President of the School Board, and let's sit down, see what we can, all right, together, and get some, some more money for this program.
You're welcome, ma'am. Thank you.
Jean, I saw something today on, I think it was Good Morning America, and they had, the students were dancing in the very beginning of the day with their teacher, little kids, and they were, they got all energized, and then they were ready to work. That was something that the teacher did with them, and it was so awesome to watch.
Patty? Yeah, I'm sorry, Lorraine.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Giuseppe, Mr. Williams, D'Alata, and Latoya. Latoya, who, when I first met, worked for the summer rec program while she was going to college, and it's nice to see you come back, work for the borough, and give back to the community. That's what we need, is people like you. Also, these programs are great for kids that, in the summer, would normally have nothing to do. When they have parents that work, they sit home and watch TV all day, or play games all day. It's important to feed them breakfast and lunch. I mean, giving back to the community the way you guys do is amazing, and if there's anything we can do, we're there for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
I'm trying to follow this agenda, and I know there's, there's Tony's and all here this evening for this police contract, but, not police contract, sorry, chief, don't get nervous, for the trash contract, but I wanted to move some things around, but these people are also in a hurry to get out of here, so I'm doing the best I can. So we have somebody here from the Rescue Squad. Two, three minutes for, so I don't want to hard decide. You sound like Scott.
Good evening, my name is Tony Correa, I'm a paramedic and educator with the Bucks County Rescue Squad. First of all, I thank Mr. President Council for taking time to hear this quick proposal. I'm here on behalf of Chief Bonner and the Board of Directors of Rescue Squad. What we're proposing here is to do, increase our community outreach and public outreach by doing a public access CPR and defibrillation program three or four times in a borough. While we do a good job, we believe, based on our statistics and training, and especially along working with the police department and the fire department, when it comes to cardiac arrest, the way to really be successful is engage the community. And we're proposing to provide training, three or four times a year, public access free training for residents, businesses of Bristol Borough. The importance of this is that when the bystanders, when the public are trained and properly used, and they engage and use, utilize the CPR and AED defibrillation, they have a, we have a two to three times greater chance of resuscitating that, that person, and bringing them back to a good quality of life. So our goal here is to improve the quality of life and health in Bristol Borough, as we've been doing for years, and we believe starting with the CPR training will be a great way to go about it. And Chief Bonner was asking that maybe, you know, using the council.
Community.
Community room, or somewhere else to potentially do that, we'll bring all the equipment, we have all this, there's no cost to anybody for this program.
Awesome. Work out the logistics with the manager, and you could either use the community room, or if you need a bigger space, use the Murray Yard, I guess, right? We'll work something out.
Well, we'll see how the first class goes, obviously, and then go from there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Came in under two minutes.
I have a regular, Mr. President.
You want to come up with Mrs. Cullen and Mr. Ketruchy for some more presentations?
Good evening, members of council, members of the public. We believe that good things happen, and the more good things happen, they feed on themselves, and it snowballs to more good things happening. And in August, I got a phone call from Joe Morris, a former Bristol resident, and a, an executive with Gretz Beer Distributors, and he asked if we would be interested in bringing the Clydesdales to Bristol Borough. And the immediate answer was yes, and then we had to go to the borough and make sure that we got the real yes. And at that time, it was, it was tough, because it was going to be on Labor Day weekend. Anyway, with the cooperation of the borough, and Merle Winslow, and, and the police, and everyone else, and it came to fruition. So if we can have Joe Morris, and Matt Cassano, and Joe's little boy. Come on up.
How are you doing? This was awesome seeing you. Mr. Cassano, how are you, sir? Always a pleasure.
Thank you, Joe. This was, if you're one of the two people in the world who weren't there, there were about 14,000 people who attended this event. Joe said it was the largest attendance that they had in any of the regional events that they had, so we're very proud of them. I think it speaks to Bristol becoming a destination. One of the things we did to generate interest was we had a photo contest, invited members of the borough to take photographs, and the criteria was you had to capture the crowd, the Clydesdales, and some kind of borough landmark. And we had five winners. We couldn't decide between them, so the five winners are made up of three artists, Chris Slate, Josh Temmer, and Hector Bertosia. So we have put these together as a composite for you for your office, and we have extra copies. And I know Lou has a proclamation to read for you, and want to thank you very much, Joe. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay. I'm really happy to do this, because in our general office here at Borough Hall, there's a picture from, says 1920, but I think it was 1915, it's my grandfather, Butch Catani, and his beer wagon. And Joe got started in the beer career with my cousins, and moved on to bigger and better things, and we're happy for him. In appreciation, Historic Bristol Borough thanks Gretz Beer Company, Michael Gretz, President, and the entire Gretz family for providing the Anheuser-Busch Budweiser Clydesdale horses on Labor Day, September 5th, 2016. The performance was enjoyed by thousands of people, young and old. The streets were lined with smiling faces as they witnessed the magnificent team of horses pulling the beautiful Budweiser wagon with the famous dalmatian seated above. The ceremonial delivery of beer was viewed by patrons who packed the taverns in anticipation of the team's arrival. The Gretz family has had a presence in the Philadelphia beer industry since 1881. Their commitment to excellence is obvious in both the way they conduct their business and the way they treat the communities they serve. This commitment has continued to the fifth generation of the Gretz family, and their involvement in the beer industry. The Bristol Borough Council, Mayor, Police Chief, and all their staff, as well as Raising the Bar and the entire Bristol community, extend our thanks and appreciation to Gretz Beer Company, and wish them continued success. And Lorraine?
I would also like to, on behalf of Historic Bristol Borough, like to thank Joe Morris, the Marketing Director, and Matt Cassano, sorry. Sales consultant for the Gretz Company, Anheuser-Busch Beverage Company.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. You want to say something, Joe?
I don't know if there's a lot to say. I mean, I grew up in this town, and to come back and see this, and see these faces, and see what the town is, how it's changed, and hear what's going on is, is amazing. You know, I have a little guy now, and to know that I could bring him up in this school district is amazing. I wasn't given the opportunities that some of these kids have, so the hard work that you're doing, and from the first day, when I literally called Bill, and pretty much, I think everybody knew the Clydesdales were coming there before they actually were. You do a really great job of promoting the event, and when we finally got to town, and when you do this for 20 years, and you roll into town, and you see the level of organization and commitment from everybody who was part of this, it was like no other. And I've been through a lot of these, from security, to organization, to publicity, to coming down Mill Street, after thinking I've seen most of the people on the streets, to pull down into that town, and to see everybody from special needs people, and people experiencing, touching the Clydesdales who couldn't see, leaving lasting memories. And we are in the beer business, and I grew up in a beer family. Not in a great way, but, long story short, to see so many smiling faces that, you know, the Clydesdales and Anheuser-Busch can bring, from a great family of the Gretz Beer Company, is really rewarding, and to finally bring it home was a special day for me. So everybody should be proud of everybody in this town and the hard work that you do. We're honored to be, you know, down here and part of it, and without Matt, you know, and the hard work that actually gets it all done, I just say stuff, you know, and take nice trophies. But thank you very much, this was awesome.
Would Matt like to say something?
Thank you, yeah, it was just an amazing day, you know, to be part of that in my hometown. Proud to be, you know, in Bristol now for seven years, and like you just said, to come down Mill Street like that and see thousands of people, it was, it was an amazing day, and how everything ran so smooth, thanks to everybody that was involved. I mean, it was, it was truly amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Congratulations.
The row ball.
It was the best. The best.
Oh, sorry.
Open, all right, we got mayor. Joe, you have a lot, or do you want I could come back to you? No, I mean, I could, because I know some of these guys want to get to have meetings. Okay, okay, whatever you got to do. Take away.
All right, I'll be as brief as possible.
I noticed that our tree was delivered today and was put up. The tree lighting's the 25th, and then the Christmas parade will be the 26th of November. I've had a couple meetings with the chief, police chief, and also I met with the fire chief, Herb Schleck. Meetings are progressing very well with the chief, I think he's doing an excellent job at this point. Talked about a lot of the policies that he's reviewing and updating, which we need to do, and I know we talked about that in the interviews. And also too, I'm looking over budgets and we were talking about some potential grants that we might be able to work on during next year. And that's basically about it for you.
You got, I mean, I, you got anything, take your time.
That's good, that's it.
Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Joe.
I'm going to open up public participation. Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, go to the podium. You can just leave them all there and we'll grab them all the way up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, go to the podium. You can just leave them all there and we'll grab them all the way up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Council. My name is Frank Delgasso. I live in Philadelphia and I've been coming to Bristol for the past several years. I've met somebody before and I love the borough and I've decided to move here. I signed an agreement of sale at Island View and I was hoping council could answer some of the questions. I've tried to reach out to the builder and he's not available. He doesn't answer phone calls, he doesn't respond to emails. Essentially, he's vanished and I was hoping that somebody could give me some clarity on the status of the project and where we're going from here.
Before Mr. Dillon and Mr. Solano take it, I just want to make sure that you're aware, as are the people of the borough and North Ward, excuse me, East Ward and Riverfront North and T-Bird Drive, that Lorraine and I have been asking the same questions you have been asking. We've been running into some of the same problems with the builder ourselves, and Mr. Dillon has recently, I think, gotten some more, at least, general information.
I'd like to report to the solicitor. Are there any public actions that the firm has taken?
Sounds good.
Well, I think what we can say is that the, as far as we know, the builder is proceeding. There's no indication he stopped work. Apparently, he has slowed down and there's not much we could do about it. I think it's public knowledge that he had filed suit against the bank and they're involved in that litigation. I can't comment too much on that, but I think that's public knowledge. But I know there's a lot of rumors going around, but as of now, the developer still has possession of the property and he's still proceeding. I think he finished the roads and the curbing and he needs to finish one of the buildings and do some more site work, and we hope that he's going to be ready to close on some units sometime in the next few months. But as far as we know, he's proceeding and there's not much more as a borough we can do. We can't push him to get it done in a certain amount of time, and, you know, as much as we know.
Okay, so he's still a viable builder and to your knowledge, he's not going bankrupt?
Nope. No, there's never been any indication of that. Like I said, he's involved in some litigation with the bank, but as far as we know as of today, he's still on site and he still has control of the property.
Okay, so it's still moving forward?
Yeah, hopefully, people will be moving in.
Okay. Again, I signed the agreement of sale about two and a half years ago.
When was the last time you heard back from?
Two years ago?
Have you gone on the site at all?
It's, yes, and just like the site itself, it's virtually dormant. A lot of you have probably seen me ride a bike around here, I'm here virtually every day. I ride through the site daily. It's dormant. They've even started vandalizing some of the buildings. They broke in one unit, they busted the windows upstairs, broke down the door, it's just, it's a disgrace. I haven't seen any workers there in ages.
Well, as Mr. Solano pointed out, one of the, you know, roadblocks we're running into as well is that it's a private development and a private matter and we're trying to get answers, but they don't have to give them to us and they're not. So we're equally frustrated and we're...
Again, as you know, Greg, I gave a little talk at your campaign years ago and I still feel the same way, I love the borough.
Yeah.
I've decided to move here. I bought a brand new home about five years ago. My neighbors think I'm a little crazy, perhaps I am. I decided to move here. Signed an agreement of sale in May of 2014. I spent over 25 grand so far. And he hasn't given me any answers, it's zero. That's why I decided to present it to council and hopefully you can...
I think we all could feel your frustration, believe me. It's just that, like Greg said, you know, our hands are tied because it's a private... It's like if I didn't build, if you contracted me and I didn't get the house done, I mean, it would be between me and you. I'm just surprised there's not an end date in that agreement that you signed.
Oh, there is, there is. It was 12 months after I signed it, from May of 2014. You know, it's like, it's just...
That's a shame.
Sad.
If there's anything we hear or we know, Frank, I'm going to have somebody contact you from the borough.
Okay.
Have you requested your money back, Frank?
Excuse me?
Have you requested your money back?
Yes. He ignores letters, he ignores phone calls. In fact, I even went to his headquarters in Newtown on State Street.
Yeah, I know where it is.
I walked into the building, one gentleman approached me, he's from an investment firm, and I told him, you know, where's America? He said, it's upstairs. He says, but the door's locked, he hasn't been around for ages. It's like, wow. Sad.
How about sending a letter to the bank?
Which bank is this?
The bank that he's...
I have no idea.
I was in the paper who he's dealing with. I mean, I'm sure that's public knowledge too.
Okay.
Maybe they, you know, let him know that you're looking at your money back or whatever.
Or maybe the RDA.
Maybe they'll give you some more information than we know.
Okay.
So I'm sure we can get you that name of the bank.
Okay, so you'll inform me of the bank's name, yeah, I'll pursue that avenue. I've tried many different avenues and each virtually vanished. I met him, like I said, over two years ago. That was it.
I wish there was something, a better answer we can give you right now, Frank. I really do. Do they have his information?
Um, excuse me?
Do they have your information?
Yeah.
In the borough, so they can call you? Find anything out? We got everything.
Chief Henry does.
Oh, yes? Okay.
Okay. I'm one of 10 people who signed a sales agreement and it's just sad for all of us. So, thanks for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Public comment? Okay, that ends public participation. All right, before we get started, before we get to item seven, I know there's attorneys here from, is there, you have an attorney representing waste, attorney representing Mascara, I'm sure? And how about Advance? Are they here? No attorney. So if any of the attorneys want to make a statement prior to this vote, I'm the opponent. So why don't we go through items two to eight, leave seven out, because that should take us a minute or two to do, and let's come back to seven and we'll get anybody...
You mean six, Rob?
Yeah.
Yeah, six, I'm sorry, Greg. So let's do one to five and seven and eight, and we'll deal with six as the last thing on the agenda.
Start at three.
So let's start with number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the council minutes of 10/10/16, 10/18/16, 11/1/16, and 11/7/16, accept the treasurer's report for September of 2016, accept the police and DJ's report for October of 2016, accept the fire chief's report for October of 2016, accept the inspection department report for October of 2016, accept public works department report for October of 2016, and accept the HARB report for 10/24/16.
Second by Ms. Cullen. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
What's the extension on the treasurer's report?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the session of the street sweeping sign enforcement as of November 19th, 2016.
Second by Mr. Pezz. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the manager to approve any change orders if needed, not to exceed $10,000 per change order for peer and day docs. Council will ratify at next public meeting.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Ricki. Questions or comments, Mr. Devine?
Yeah, the only question I have is the, for not to exceed $10,000 for a change order, when we discussed it with the engineer, we didn't talk about anything that would be less than 10,000, right?
There can be some stupid, that's stupid, but something...
I know what you mean.
Anything over that, we'll have to have a special meeting on.
Got you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of proposed 2017 municipal budgets for public inspection.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number eight.
President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a meeting to adopt budgets and approve tax ordinances November 30th, 2016.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, so on item six is the award of the trash contract. Nobody has to speak. If anyone wants to speak, you have a right to go to the podium and I'll give you an opportunity. If no one wants to speak, then there'll be a motion on the floor. This was, we had an executive session before tonight's meeting, which we discussed the possible litigation with the trash contract. So everybody's aware of what we're doing, so Chuck, if you have any, do you want to speak or you don't want to? I mean, it's up to you. So you're representing Waste Management?
Correct. Good evening, thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Vince Maggi, I'm with the law firm Phil Wallach, represent Waste Management in this matter. I just wanted to quickly, just at least put forward on the record that it's our contention that Waste Management is the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for this particular bid. The bids submitted by the other bidders did have defects in them that would exclude them from being awarded. As noted in various correspondence with, both with the borough manager as well as borough solicitor, the Advance bid had defects related to insurance matters. The non-conclusion affidavit had problems where it didn't seem to comply with the specific bid specifications that were required. There were potential financial issues, just as a general matter with the organization, as well as the fact that the bid bond itself failed to address the specifics of the dollar amount that was required in the bid specs. Mascara bid, meanwhile, which came in third place in the numbers, also had deficiencies. Its 90-day requirement under the insurance certificate seemed to be problematic based on terms of the bid specifications. One of its letters from a recycling provider for recycling deposits wasn't even signed. And based on the foregoing, when we look at Waste Management's bid, they satisfied all the criteria, the bid specifications, the dollar amount was a competitive rate, and it's our contention that Waste Management is prepared and ready to service the borough immediately in January. With that, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to entertain them otherwise.
Any questions? Thank you. Does Advance want to speak, even though they don't have an attorney, or you're okay?
We're good.
You're good? How about Mascara, anything, are you okay?
Just very briefly, Mr. President, Alan DeGenere, our Deputy General Counsel for JP Mascara, Sons I have with me here, Sam Augustin, our Director of Sales and Marketing and our Bonding Agent. All I want to say, members of the council, is there's been correspondence back and forth, your bid specifications clearly spelled out what you asked for. It's not what Mascara wanted, it's not what Waste Management wanted, it's not what Advance wanted. I'm sure your solicitor reviewed the correspondence, gave the matter the appropriate consideration. It's not an auction, you awarded the bid to the lowest responsible bidder, and I think enough's been said with the correspondence back and forth, and we look forward. I submit, our company submitted the lowest responsible bid. It's not the first time that I've reviewed bids where some other bidders haven't complied and we appreciate the opportunity to continue to service the borough. If anyone has any questions, otherwise, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to give us your legal opinion on this?
Yes. So on October 19th, pursuant to advertising, the borough opened three sealed bids from Advance Disposal, Waste Management, and Mascara and Sons. Just so you know, the bid packets were anywhere from five to 12 inches, a lot of documents. And this is because, this is, the bid is based upon the specs that the borough decides upon at our discretion, and they're very detailed and I think admittedly very stringent to protect the borough. Anyway, every bidder has the opportunity to come in and review those documents, which each party did avail themselves of. And each attorney elected to have their attorney, I mean, each bidder had their attorney, send me letters. Those letters were sent to the other parties. In some cases, the attorneys responded to someone else's letters. In fact, I was receiving, I received a letter this morning. So every bidder had the opportunity, not only to review all the documents, but to have their attorney present their arguments to me as to why the bids were valid or not valid, qualified or not. Okay. Based upon all of that, a thoroughly reviewed document, I'm offering this opinion to council, that it's my opinion that Mascara and Sons is the lowest qualified and responsive bidder based upon the documents, and that it's my recommendation if council is going to award a contract, that it be to Mascara and Sons.
So with that, do I have a motion?
is prepared and ready to service the Borough immediately in January. With that, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to entertain them otherwise.
Any questions? Thank you. Does Advance want to speak, even though they don't have an attorney, or you're okay?
We're good.
You're good? How about Mascara or anything, or you're okay?
Just very briefly, Mr. President, Al Dejanera, I'm the General Counsel for J.P. Mascara and Sons. I have with me here Sam Augenstein, our Director of Sales and Marketing, General Bonding Agent. All I want to say, members of the council, is there's been correspondence back and forth. Your bid specifications clearly spelled out what you asked for. It's not what Mascara wanted. It's not what Waste Management wanted. It's not what Advance wanted. I'm sure your solicitor reviewed the correspondence, gave the matter the appropriate consideration. It's not an auction. You awarded the bid to the lowest responsible bidder, and I think enough's been said with the correspondence back and forth, and we look forward. I submit, our company submitted the lowest responsible bid. It's not the first time that I've reviewed bids where some other bidders haven't complied, and we appreciate the opportunity to continue to service the Borough. If anyone has any questions, otherwise, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to give us your legal opinion on this?
Yes. So on October 19th, pursuant to advertising, the Borough opened three sealed bids from Advance Disposal, Waste Management, and Mascara and Sons. Just so you know, the bid packets were anywhere from five to 12 inches, a lot of documents. And this is because this is, it's, the bid is based upon the specs that the Borough decides upon at our discretion, and they're very detailed and, I think admittedly, very stringent to protect the Borough. Anyway, every bidder has the opportunity to come in and review those documents, which each party did avail themselves of. And each attorney elected to have their attorney, I mean, each bidder had their attorney, send me letters. Those letters were sent to the other parties. In some cases, the attorneys responded to someone else's letters. In fact, I was receiving, I received a letter this morning. So every bidder had the opportunity not only to review all the documents, but to have their attorney present their arguments to me as to why the bids were valid or not valid, qualified or not. Okay. Based upon all of that, I've thoroughly reviewed the documents, I'm offering this opinion to council, that it's my opinion that Mascara and Sons is the lowest qualified and responsive bidder, based upon the documents, and that it's my recommendation, if council's going to award a contract, that it be to Mascara and Sons. So with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to award a five-year refuse contract to J. P. Mascara and Sun as the lowest qualified and responsive bidder, based upon their bid proposal of October 19, 2016.
Second by Mr. Katroci. Any questions or comments? Mr. Devine.
The only question I have is, is this something that has to be decided today? Is there a time consideration to this motion?
Well, the reason we're considering it's on the agenda, and we need to make sure we have somebody January 1st to pick up our trash.
There's two things that the successful bidder has to do. First of all, we have to sign contracts, et cetera. They have to get their performance bond, et cetera, in line. But our bid specs require two things, that hopefully by January 1st, the new brochures will be prepared. That's 4,700, I believe, brochures. But more importantly, because we're going to single-stream recycling, our contract provides that the successful bidder has to provide new.
30-gallon?
Larger, has to provide larger recycling buckets. So obviously, time is needed to do this. So putting it off to December, I think will put the successful bidder in a more difficult position to try to get things done.
Mr. Pezz, Mrs. Collin, I'll, Lorraine, do you have your hand up? Mr. Pezz.
I just want to say, when there are decisions like this to be made, and there's a lot of